Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting on November 14. First item on the agenda is called the auto. The vote call.
Member Glenn present?
Member Ryan present.
Member Barry present?
Member Need present.
First item is the following minutes of October 5th, 2018 and October 10th, 2018. I know you guys have brought your motion to accept that. We'll do the meeting adjourned.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The October 10th Planning Board Meeting?
I'll make a motion to accept.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, before we start, I have a request for a continuance. Letter addressed to the Director, kind of accept this correspondence as my formal request on behalf of the applicant in the above referenced matter, which is 35 Main Street, to continue the hearing scheduled for November 14, 2018, for the next scheduled Planning Board Meeting. I received correspondence from the planning staff today regarding various provisions as well as peer review suggestions, and my client requires time to comply with the request received. Sincerely, William J. Failen, Esquire. So a motion to continue it to our December 12th meeting.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next item is a continued public hearing for 1534, 1538, 1546, 1550, and 1556 Hancock Street, Planning Board Case 2017, dash subdivision, dash one. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81, and the Rules and Regulations for a Different Subdivision Approval Adopted by the Planning Board of the City of Quincy, dated September 1st, 2007, excuse me, the Quinsey Planning Board will hold a continued public hearing on Wednesday, November 14, 2018, at or after 7:00 PM in the lower level conference room, Quincy City Hall, 1505 Hancock Street, on the application of Hancock Business Center LLC and American Eagle Investment LLC, 20 Linden Street, Alston, Mass. The applicant is proposing to subdivide 1534, 1538, 1546, and 1550, and 1556 Hancock Street into three parcels and create a new right-of-way named Broadway A. The property contains approximately 17,249 plus or minus square feet of land and are located within the QC-ZD-15 zoning district and shown in assessment plan 1142, plots 22, 25, and 28, strike that, 38, and plots 2 and 8. I have a letter addressed to the department to represent LBC Partners and their affiliates, Hancock Business Center LLC, American Eagle Investment LLC, place at Parkway Q LLC and Parkway Q Business Center LLC, collectively LBC. LBC and its affiliates have submitted applications to the Planning Board for the approval of the final subdivision plans for the following: 1534, 1538, 1546, 1550, and 1556 Hancock Street, which is case number 2017 subdivision one; second, 100 to 134, Parkway Case 2017 subdivision two; and three, 119 to 151, Parkway Case Number 2017 subdivision three. The applicant is requesting a continuance, and I would ask for a motion to continue it until our January meeting.
I'll make a motion and also a motion to waive any further reading.
Okay. Motion made to continue it, all three. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. I can take an item also out of order to request a continue. It's 11 Oak Grove Terrace Planning Board Case 2018-18. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Quincy Planning Board will hold public hearing on Wednesday, November 14, 2018, on or after 7:00 PM in the lower level conference room, Quincy Town Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy, on the application of 11 Oak Grove Terrace LLC, 1393 Liberty Street, Brangery, for the site plan review and the Quincy zoning ordinance titled 17, Section 9.5.1, which is site plan review, and a special permit under Section 5.1.17, which is a parking waiver. The applicant proposes the demolition of an existing single-family structure, construction of a new 13-unit residential building with 26 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 13,535, more or less, square feet of land and is located 11 Oak Grove Terrace. Subject property is located within an industrial A zoning district and is shown in assessment plan 3019, plot 24, plot one. The request is to continue to, to our December 12th meeting. Is there a motion?
A motion.
So a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. So the next item on that question. The next item is a continued public hearing for 365 Newport Avenue, Planning Board Case 2018-07, continued from on October 10th, 2018 meeting. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a continued public hearing on Wednesday, October 10th, 2018, strike that, on or after, excuse that one. On or after 7:00 PM in the first boardroom, Commission's Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on the application of George Lang, 365 Newport Avenue, LLC, 288 Grove Street, Suite 128, Brangery, or 2134, for site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 9.5.1, which is site plan review, and a special permit under Section 5.1.17 parking waiver. The applicant proposes the demolition of an existing structure, construction of a new four-10-story, strike that, four-10-unit residential building with garage parking with seven parking spaces along with 14 exterior parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 14,842, plus or minus, square feet of land and is located 365 Newport Avenue. Subject property is located within a residential B zoning district and is shown in assessment now, 5189, Lot 17. Mr. Chairman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, Department has its consultant for Mr. Chen. As Chairman members of the Board, as you know, we've been before this board and others to this project. When this first project first started, it was 14 units, four stories. Since that time, policy to the neighbors, policy to the board, substantial changes have been made. They're down to nine units, they're down three stories. The reason we've come before is in, I think, Council, sorry, I don't know, Member Barry, Mr. Chair Barry indicated, one of the issues with the building, if we pull on with you in the beginning, was not a pretty building. And we said, you know, you mentioned the fact that, you know, we had to do something with the building, so we made a number of changes. One of the concerns people had too is the height of the building, how that's going to be comparison to the others, to the other, the other buildings and the other houses running around there. So we got different views for the board to see. How was it to see from a side view, how was it to see from the back, from the front, in comparison to the other buildings that are the house partners that are there. In order to get more specific, as far as the change in the main, architectural changes, Mr. Chen is going to come forward and tell you exactly architecturally how we changed the building, then we're going to work the engineering part. So, Mr. Chen.
Good evening, Mr. Chen. And support, Mr. Chen, Chen. So, since our last hearing, a major redesign of the exterior has happened. The top portion mechanical area was removed, and what we've done here is the having third floor PA and Mansard roof type, which visually helps lower the massing of the building. And the exterior, exterior trying to match to the surrounding neighborhood using clapboards and hardywood sidings and panel to match with the surrounding area. In terms of the height, overall height, it's just the state is same, other than the mechanical space, the headhouse used to be in this area. And the number of units has been reduced to three units per floor, a total of nine
If I could just add on that, and one of the issues was up on the talk for, if you recall, it wasn't blocks, and one of the things, I know what Mr. Cohen said, this is one of the entrances, people are going to comply, it has to have some sort of impact. So what we did is we changed all the front up there. On the side view, one of the, another issue was what, how, the height of the building, how it's going to be, the impact there, but right there on this one, you'll see, this is Newport Terrace right there. Here in the back is going to be the height of the building, so it's equivalent to the buildings around there. And why I'm, I want to bring that up is, one of the fears the neighbor had, justly so, was is this building going to be much taller than ours? Is it going to block ours? So we had this drawing made to show that it's going to be the same height. And also, because of the slope, there's going to be no impact to these houses at all, and it's going to be equivalent to the same size as this house right here, as Quincy goes down the hill. As far as the density is concerned, we have all the parking that's required, we have the, we lower the units, lower the floors. The one of the, again, I'm going to emphasize, one of the major things that came, when it came before the board last night was, it just was a box. And I think you have many blocks in the city, and it was time to change. And I think, based on what the city, the people said, and based what the board said, they went back and redesigned the property, rebuilt the layout. And again, at that time, I agreed, and I still agree with them, at the first presentation, it wasn't a pretty, wasn't a pretty picture. I also have here the engineer, who said one of the changes occurred.
The record, my name is Chairman, adding a design work. Some of the changes we have done to the site, not major change, but based on reducing the unit, further reducing parking down, so the rear parking is actually a much better maneuver of getting in and out. And along with the architecture change, and some of the technical depending parking recommendations, we moved the elevator to the rear, so we have rear entrance that can walk in, into right into the elevator. So it's easy for the residents or visitor to the site, they can, they can get in through Ghost Street or whatnot, and come right in and get on, get into. On the front area, we revised the print previously to address some of the traffic dependent common, as well as community dependent common. One of the concern is the site distance, when the car coming out, they afraid the site distance blocking the view, looking to the left towards our view street. So we moved the landscape retaining wall on the previous print and create a gentle on gray landscaping and spec that the landscape paint would be a little stroberie, so it won't be blocking the view and with traffic engineer analysis. When the car exiting the driveway, they can look all the way out to the intersection of Blue Street. So it's an improvement of the, of the site features. And also taking the engineering department recommendation, we adding a fence all the way around on top of the retaining wall, just going to be a vinyl, four-foot tall fence for protection, but also that can help to block any light intrusion from the car coming up from the garage shining onto the neighboring houses. The major changes are pretty much cover on the described. And also, I want to point out that this project is going to reprise the existing sidewalk in front of the frontage of the property, the entire frontage. It's going to be a new concrete sidewalk.
Just so the board knows, when we go to the department, one of the department's concern was for the neighbors, and that was, the neighbors on this side, so those cars are coming out of the back, out of this driveway here, not that. When they come out, then the cars are knocking, at nighttime, they're knocking, be hit houses. So there will be a fence or, we actually talked, spoke about maybe some of the light abilities or anything that's going to stop lights from going into the other property. So, and as far as lighting as a whole, because of safety issues, there is going to be lighting here, there'll be soft lighting, I don't know, I'm trying to think somewhere, because you can see with the soft light, names of, just on the driveway, for safety reasons, anybody walking or anything, or wanting to get caught. So as far as the lighting is concerned, it will have soft lighting to protect the safety reasons, and that will be able to get to the cars. We're open for any questions or concerns the board may have, and I hear the rest of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Number Barry.
Couple. First, I want to say thank you for taking our comments to heart. I think this is a significant improvement from what we had before. Something I didn't realize, until recently, was even when you're down on Hancock Street, heading north, and you're stopped at the light, you can look up and you can see this parcel. So, you know, it, from a number of different angles, it's important. And so, I'm happy with the design, curious to hear what the neighbors say, so I'll reserve a few of my comments. Only question that I have is, I don't have a good feel for what the landscaping will be like out front. I know that there's limited area, but I'm hoping that we can, you know, get the most bang for our buck as far as flowers or, or whatever you're able to do, and I was just wondering if you guys could sort of expand on what the point is.
What an issue the landscaping is, as you can see, there's some drawings there, whether it be, it has to be low. There will be flowers, it will be maybe small. Why? Because if it's higher, it's going to defeat the whole purpose for you to look down there. So, they, we talked, we spoke today about having, and that will give the landscaping a look what the board wants, but it has to be low, we want it to make a colorful, but low. The ideal thing would to have it rise a little bit higher there, but again, you don't want it to defeat the purpose of that view, and that's the reason why we must pull back. So, we'll, that's, that's reality, just a concern about having it to fine.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, here is a continuing public hearing. So ask anybody that wishes to speak, come forward, identify yourself. This is 365 Newport Avenue.
I need a Kuta's, quite grandy left hand, and I have to agree, this is the man's side roof, and the changes that have been made, much, much more appealing, I think. One question I do have is about the retaining wall in the back of the property. What is that going to look like?
So, we don't have a definite design, but what we have been talking to, structural consultant at this point, because the retaining wall is really tight to the property line, we're thinking about the type that you drill piles into the ground, and then panels you can put up, just like sun wall, like it's just a precast frame you can put in, into, between the pile, like the slot, so more like, you know, the highway sun wall, they can, they can have different patterns, like a precast concrete.
Well, that's, that's quite a large area in the back, and the width and the height of it is quite, quite good. And I think something needs to be positively resolved here, because that could be quite an eyesore for the neighbors.
You can definitely take that consideration, if you know.
Right, thank you.
The good thing about the precast, you can come with different patterns, you can order different color, different designs.
Just so the board knows, it's not going to be some up wall, just step grace up wall, that, those are, it's going to have some attractions.
And some, some idea of height? Yeah, we have one.
This, we range bombs, one foot for 14 all the way back, this is primary company.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Didn't last time, anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody that doesn't want to speak or hasn't spoken, there are sign-in sheets over on the, I guess I'd call it desk on the side. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Member Barry, you want to make some additional comments?
No. No, thank you.
Does the department have a recommendation?
Yes, we do. Just for the board's knowledge, we did, this project was reviewed by an independent peer review engineer. Late in the day, our project manager from the consultant notified us that a family matter came up and he couldn't be here. We were in discussions late this afternoon, and he's satisfied at this point. There's a few details that will show up on the final plan set, but the applicant has seen them and has acknowledged them, and those final details will follow along. With that said, after consideration of the site plan, accompanying documents and the comments received from the city staff and peer review consultant, the department recommends that the board approve the site plan review under Quincy Center Zoning Ordinance Title 17 under Section 9.5.1, slight site plan review and a special permit under Section 5.1.17 parking waiver, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances from the Quincy Zoning Order Appeals. Number two, the applicant shall conduct a pre-demolition hazardous material survey, i.e. asbestos-containing materials, flashlights, PCD-containing materials, including ballasts, mercury-containing thermostats, and switches, and provide a copy of that survey to the Quincy Health Department. If hazardous materials are found in the building, the applicant or its license abatement contractor shall consult with the Quincy Health Department regarding abatement measures and monitoring of the abatement work. Number three, as the project site is in a residential neighborhood, the applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures for project-related noise generating activities to comply with local and state regulations. Number four, trash and recycling shall be picked up on-site by a private waste hauler hired by the Project Homeowner Association. Trash and recycling containers shall remain inside the building until a private waste hauler comes for the scheduled trash pickup. This special condition shall be incorporated into the Homeowners Association documents and into property deeds. Number five, the applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk along the entire frontage of 365 Newport Avenue with a new ADA-compliant concrete sidewalk with granite curving as directed by the Department of Public Works. Number six, the applicant shall respond in writing to all outstanding Department of Public Works and peer review comments prior to the issuance of the building permit. Number seven, the applicant shall submit a lighting plan to the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Those are the conditions the department has recommended.
The only, the only addition I would make, to have a number eight, it has to be the submission of a landscape plan to the Department for Approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Any comments from the department on the recommendation, is there a motion to accept the department's recommendation and approve the permit?
I will make a motion to accept, subject to the department's recommendation for modified budget.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman, I just want to let you know, George's name made it clear, you go after this based on assistance with the planning department, planning board, or the neighbors, the more you want, so we want to thank you for consideration of this process.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is a continued public hearing of 66 McGrath Highway and 70 Spear Street, Planning Board Case 2018-08, continued from on October 10th, 2018 meeting. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a continued public hearing on Wednesday, November 14, 2018, on or above 733 in the lower level conference room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on the application of George Lang, McGrath Highway Enterprises LLC, 288 Grove Street, Suite 128, Brangery, for the site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review, and a special permit under Section 5.1.17 parking waiver. The applicant proposes the demolition of an existing structure and construction of a new six-story, 46-unit residential building with 65 garage parking spaces and two levels along with six exterior parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. The property contains 27,746, more or less, square feet of land is located at 66 McGrath Highway and 70 Spear Street. Subject property is located within a business C zoning district and is shown in assessment plan 1131, Lot 1 and Lot 2, Lot B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Department has its consultant. Chairman, I just want the board to know, we're not going to give a full presentation, we're just going to let you know where we are right now, there's more work to be done. Based on what this board has said, based on what the neighbors have said, we made some drastic, not drastic, we made some substantial changes to the, to the project. First, we worked 46 units to down to 42. One of the issues that we heard is the height and the size. So based on the fact that we're actually removing a whole floor, so it's actually bringing one less story, what we'll also do is this, we're making the building smaller. How do we do that? Well, by removing one of the, one of the parking floors, which we're going to remove to another site, I would tell the board, Mr. Lynn now owns that property right there too. The parking that will be on one of the floors that will make the building higher has been removed, and now there'll be parking outside at that lot there. So, we have the numbers of park, we have the number of parking, the building itself is going to be smaller, it's going to be taken back, one of the issues, what's the setback, it's going to be far the setback, and the heights will be changed. We're in the process of doing that, we are going to have some final drawings to present to the board at a certain point, but I thought at this point, because it was in the schedule, it's a good time to come forward and to say where we're going, what direction we're going in. We heard the board's concern about the density, we heard the board's concern about the height, and we heard the board's concern about the parking. Every single one has been addressed, and we think we're going to go further with it. But right now, we reduced it from 46 units to 42, reduced it one floor, and moved some of the parking to that, to the parking lot, to a lot right next door that a lot's in, that's going to merge into this one for parking outside parking. So, we just want to let you know where we are right now, we just wanted to give a quick presentation as to where we are. And we're open for any questions the board may have at this point.
And I don't know if this is a fair question to you or your team, but do you know what the epic, the Flory ratio was before and what it is under this revised plan?
Yeah, the ratio is a 2.47, the old one, probably right now is by, but we, the new one, we don't know yet. But we're all over that.
And again, one of the concerns we, people expressed was the fact that we're now too far. This allows us to condense the building and we follow back. So, we plan on, we, with the planning department, again, to produce, to show better drawings and better, let them know what direction we're in, and we hope to be here next month to present to the board a full hearing.
I just, you know, one, one other comment I was happy to see is they eliminated the curb cut on McGrath Highway. You know, with the, the building out at the edge of the sidewalk, there was a driveway there, you know, I, so that's just one thing I noticed, that I find encouraging as far as the traffic flow and access from this proposal.
And to be fair to the students, he actually is the one who brought that up, he concerned the fact of that, that curb cut, so simply his recommendation.
Any questions from the board? No question.
So when you come back with the revised drawing, can you make sure that it, you show a drawing that's how it sits in the neighborhoods?
You're going to see a drawing from every single side.
Okay.
And one of the things to mention is, if you want to see a, a draw, how it's going to come, going up a graph, going down a graph, coming from the neighborhood, we will have permission to show how it's going to be seen over all different angles.
Okay, thanks. And then, just another quick question, just remind me now again how the entrance and the egress on the traffic, is that?
There's going to be an entrance here, and then there's going to be an entrance on New.
Spear?
Yeah, no, there's entrance on Spear.
Okay.
And there'll be an entrance right there. That's the parking lot, one on Spear, and right there. This one that was there right off McGrath Highway has been removed.
Okay.
So there'd be no more sudden stops in the beginning from McGrath Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, I know there are members from the community that are here, and whether they want to comment or they want to hold their comments to our, on the, on the assumption that we're going to continue.
I'm Bob LaPena, 29 Spear Street. The only question I have is with this, taking, coming out of, to The only question I have is with this, taking, coming out of Spear Street and McGrath Highway. I keep explaining to them, you only can go right on McGrath Highway. You've got the other end, on the other side, you could build a roadway out to Newcombe Street, at least to get the traffic out. I mean, other than that, I've got no problem with these people, but that traffic, unless they change Spear Street back to a two-way street, which I won't be happy about, you know? So, that's all I've got to say about it. It's mainly is, the people that buy this place are only going to go take a right turn and go around the world to go stop a job, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, that's a valid question. What we do have is, right there, on that plan, to see that they'll have access to Newcombe, from that property, so they'll be able to get off the Newcombe side.
Okay.
Go right down there.
Any other residents? Come on up, sir.
Steven Hollchuk, I live at eleven Francis Avenue, which runs between Spear and Newcombe. There's a real traffic problem right now, both on Spear and Newcombe. With the current situation and without this development taking place, or any other developments that are being, at least being thought of for Newcombe, and cars, a lot of cars come from the parking lot, the parking garage behind, behind the Cottington Hall. And they come out, they whiz down Cottington, and then they whiz down Spear Street at a really unreasonable rate of speed. And that's just how things are now. And on rush hour and stuff, there's backups on Spear Street where they try to get out on McGrath and traffic backs up. So, I don't know how, you know, what's going to happen with all these increased apartments and car, condos and cars and whatever. And as far as Newcombe, as, has, it's been previously testified by and brought up in neighborhood meetings about, especially when the school, the high school, parents letting off their kids or waiting for their kids, and parents picking up their kids. And I hadn't witnessed this myself, but more recently since I've, that's been testified here and other places. I happened to be on Newcombe Street at those times of day and it's really, I mean, people are illegally parked and blocking driveways and whatever. So, I don't know if people on Newcombe Street or neighborhood people in general are really happy about this, this new Newcombe Street parking lot development, if it really makes us any more happy with the project.
Thank you, sir. Council?
My name is Nanti Sodaro and I own the property on Newcombe Street. I lived there, lived there my entire life. And having a parking lot empty out into Newcombe Street is not acceptable. The traffic there right now is so bad, we can't even get out to go to the grocery store at the end of Newcombe Street going onto McGrath Highway. People constantly make U-turns there. It, it's just a nightmare. You've got traffic all backed up every morning and afternoon, like Steve said, because of the high school. And people want to pick up their kids. I don't blame them. And we can't even get out of our driveway on any given day. When it's school drop-off, or two-thirty in the afternoon when the school gets out. Putting more traffic on Newcombe Street is unacceptable. I mean, we can't even get into our driveway because they come battling up Newcombe Street right up Francis Avenue because they have no other place to go. And then I walk from the train some days and it's just a nightmare with those cars coming out of the, where the city hall building is, that access there, they come speeding off right down Spear Street or take a left, and then they end up going down Newcombe Street. And it's, it's not acceptable to have anything empty out into Newcombe Street at this point.
Thank you.
It's a narrow street to begin with.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Just one quick thing, please.
John Rockfield, six-two Ramwell Road. I just want to stay consistent, this is business C zoning. It does look like a good project, but this comes back to my problem with the business C zoning. So, this is twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six square feet divided by forty-two units, the new lower size unit. That's six hundred and sixty squares feet per dwelling unit. Now, I think there's a mistake in the zoning code. I think Council of Croll, actually, at the last council meeting, said something, they're going to be relooking at the zoning right now in Quincy. The last project, which was about fourteen thousand square feet, they did nine. So, double fourteen would be twenty-eight. That would be eighteen if that was here instead of forty-two. So, they're in a residential area. There's no one in business C before the last five years or so that we've been going to this five hundred square feet per dwelling unit. Now, because of this, of allowing business C zoning, it's allowing people like Fox Rock to go up to the hospital right now and think they can get away with a thousand square feet per dwelling unit and, and be okay. So, you know, this is just something where there's something wrong with the zoning and it really has to be looked at. And for planning, planning has to look how this works. I mean, does forty-two units actually belong on one plot like that? I mean, I don't think so. I disagree, you know? So, I mean, I think that dwelling space per unit, two thousand should be a minimum that we have anywhere on any lot, any place in the city. So, if we use that analysis, that would only put this at twelve. So, when they said they came down from forty-six to forty-two, that's, percentage-wise, that's a very small step down. So, I mean, I could support this at a lower level, but, you know, at this level, this is way too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counsel?
Dave McCarthy, forty-eight Whitney Road, one-one, counsel. Just like to comment a little bit first of the debate offered by Mr. Lang and company here. We had a community meeting some weeks ago, a lot of the neighbors, and the three things that Mr. Honda has brought up, the parking, the curb cut there coming out of McGrath, the setback, and the size of the building. That area between Newcombe, Cottington, Washington, and McGrath is an area that is almost like a tweener. You have neighbors in there, you have neighborhoods in there, you have buildings in there, it's zoned correctly. But I think it's always going to be an issue in regards to size, parking, and, and traffic. I think the moves that they've made here, I'm going to support the moves that Mr. Lang has made, only because they're condos also. And I know Newcombe and Quincy High School very well, and Newcombe Street, and the pickups and the drop-offs. But throughout the day, most of the time, those cars that are in that condo area are probably going to be gone to work, they're already going to be off the premises. They're not going to be there until they come home at five or six at night. They're not going to be there at two-thirty in the afternoon for that fifteen to twenty minutes on Newcombe. Or in the morning, they'd be smart not to head towards Cottington if they were leaving their condo and they'd go out onto, onto McGrath. So, I think it's a great, it's a great plan that they have now. I think every time I get involved, and I know this side of the street is Ward Five, but it borders Ward One. And I think every time we get involved in this section, we're going to come back to the same questions on size, parking, and traffic in that area. But I think it's a great job by, by the board to send them back to the drawing board, and also by the planning department to work with them, to, to get it down to this manageable size. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Anyone else wishing to speak? Can I entertain a motion to continue this to our December twelfth? I'm sorry, number Barry?
Just have one comment, because it's been a little while since you guys have been before. And I echo the sentiment of, of the counselor. I'm happy with the direction of the project going. I just wanted to raise one point that has been raised tonight, and I, I know it's not necessarily incumbent on you guys to fix it, but I would like to hear perhaps from the planning department if they could find out about this. We talked a little bit about pedestrian safety, and I can't underscore enough how dangerous the pedestrian crossing is on that road. And so, this project could bring a hundred to a hundred and fifty people that on the weekends or at night are going to be journeying across McGrath Highway. And it would just be helpful to understand, at least for my implication, whether there's any way that we can do pedestrian activated lights, just so I could start to tick and tie the influx of people with, you know, the two pedestrian crosswalks that, you know, God forbid, somebody steps out at the wrong time, there's an accident waiting to happen. And so, whoever is able to let me know, just let them kind of put everything together before we vote on this.
We're more than happy to discuss with the planning and the traffic. I always tell my clients, you always, you always have people to discuss. And they're more than happy to be able to discuss you with this resolution when we talk about it.
Yeah, just a quick. I would definitely take that on with Chris Kassani and T. Powell, the Traffic and Parking and Lighting Director. McGrath is a very busy, very busy highway. And one of the things, too, that I've seen that we're looking at is some of those crosswalks where they light it up. You know, if any place that was going to be, they're, they have some over on Route Nine in Newton where they, they, they light up the signs. And at one place we wanted to experiment with, it would be there. That is a busy street. It is going to definitely, as Vice Chair Barry said, you know, you might have people walking across, going to stop and shop now and coming back. So, it definitely will increase. And also, to the point about the cars speeding through, again, I can deal with the traffic enforcement and Lieutenant Tobin, who runs that. And we can go take a look at Spear Street in Newcombe. If we feel anybody's coming through there hot and heavy in regards to speeding and do some things there, too, for you. So, that's a very good thought, and I'll be more than pleased to address that with Mr. Kassani and T. Powell.
And we'll take a look at that. Sir? I think we're completely awake, come on up.
Okay. I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate that it's come down more in story and it's less units. But the more important thing is, again, to Spear Street, I don't know how many people in this room are aware that at Bethany Church, there's a preschool, Bright Horizons. So, parents with their small children, parents with their small children trying to cross there and whatever. There are, there are lots of children that live on, on Spear Street, on Francis Avenue. So, this, you know, there's really concerns. Initially, when the traffic pattern was changed to what, virtually one-way, the sign at the beginning of Spear Street on the Cottington Street side had a thirty mile per hour limit. And eventually, that was taken down because we complained about it. But still, people are going through there very, very fast.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. I entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to our next meeting, which is December twelfth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, if we have a nice, nice good.
Too much for sheriff. Are you feet? Okay, we've already, what was a, a motion to continue, it's written by Main Street, we're done. And also, eleven Hope Road terrace, we continue that to our December meeting. And that's the item. It's a public hearing, three sixty-six, three seventy, Copland Street, planning board case two oh one eight, after one. In accordance with provisions of Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, Quincy planning board will hold a public hearing on November fourteenth, on or above seven fifty-three in the lower level conference room, Old Town Hall, fifty-one by Pinkheart Street, Quincy, and the application of Sean Curry, Curry Hardware, three seventy, Copland Street, Quincy, Mass, over two one six nine, or a special permit under Quincy zoning ordinance title seventeen, section five point three point six, changeable sign with rotating message on a scheduled basis, five point three point thirteen, freestanding sign of greater height. The applicant proposes the construction of a new freestanding pylon sign with an approximate height of seventy plus or minus feet and changeable advertising banner. The property contains twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five, more or less, square feet of land and is located at three sixty-six, three seventy, Copland Street. Subject property is located in a business B zoning district and is shown on the session plan four oh four nine, plot ten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Evan Monique, I'm here on behalf of Curry Hardware. I'm joined today by Sean Curry from Curry Hardware and also Tim Fishman from I.D. Signs. Tim, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, more in detail about the sign and about the structure of the sign. But I'm just going to give an overview of our name. As, this is an unusual math from the board here. Technically, you're having site plan review and special permits relative to the development of residential buildings and others. This is actually special permits provided in the ordinance under sections five point three six and five point three one three, which is the sign provision, the sign ordinance in the city. Five point three six actually allows for the issuance of a special permit by this board for a changeable sign based on a scheduled changing pattern. It also, five point three one three, allows this board to issue a special permit to allow for a larger sign and a taller sign than the ordinance provides. The regulations of the ordinance allow for a freestanding sign for businesses such as Curry Hardware. And it provides, however, that the freestanding sign can be no taller than twenty-five feet in height and no larger than seventy-five feet in, in dimensional provisions. Curry Hardware, as you probably remember, had a sign, a pylon sign or a freestanding sign years ago that, that serviced their building at three seventy, Copland Street. However, during the storm last year in March, the sign came down and it actually swung across the street and, and it got caught up in the, in the wires of the, of the area. Fortunately, it was removed safely and no one was hurt and no, no property was damaged. But what they learned and what they discovered is that the new, the new requirements, the building requirements require a much larger base and, and a much safer sign for the future. What's being sought today is essentially to replace that sign that came down. It'll be no larger in size, it'll be exactly the same size in fat. But we're asking for two different items. One, because of the changes that they've made along the highway where they brought in some of the, the sound barriers along the highway, it actually impacted the, the old Curry Hardware sign where it wasn't, wasn't as visible from the highway as it had been in the past. So, what Curry is requesting today from this board is a, a special permit to allow it to be constructed at a, at a total of seventy feet in total height. And what we did is we created a couple of visuals that will allow you to see the size of the, of the sign so that it would be visible from the highway in both directions. But as you can see, the, the sound barrier that was created along the highway here essentially blocked the Curry Hardware, the former Curry Hardware sign service when it was constructed. And at the time, it was constructed at about fifty feet height. So, the seventy feet allows it to be above the sound barrier and for Curry to have visibility and advertising opportunity from traffic from coming from the north as well as traffic coming from the south. But what it also shows is the billboard that's at the Beyond East Stipe, which is right on the corner of Rollit and Copland Street. So, this sign is significantly smaller than the, than the billboard sign that's been constructed as its neighbor. In addition to the, to the height that we're requesting, we're also requesting a changeable sign banner so that it will allow for a banner to be added to the bottom of the sign and to be changed on a scheduled basis once a day. In the past, Curry had a, a banner on the bottom of the sign that allowed them to advertise for their, one. for their, one of their main vendors or their main products, which was a Benjamin Moore product. And that particular section, which is noted as an electronic messaging section, was actually the area in which the Benjamin Moore name and logo was located. By adding this messaging center or messaging banner, what it allows Curry to do is not only advertise Benjamin Moore products in their store, but then once a day or once a week to change that signage to another vendor that may be, or another product that's available in their store as well. And the goal will be is to simply change that maybe, as I indicated, once a day at midnight, at night when there's very little traffic on the roadway, and then to leave it in place all day during the course of the day. And it will be scheduled that way via the system that's available through the technology. Those two special permits really allow the replacement of the sign that was lost at Curry Hardware. This particular provision of the ordinance allows this body to allow the special permit for this changeable sign. What it doesn't allow is, doesn't allow an animated sign. It doesn't allow a sign that would move or flash or show video. And although the technology of this particular sign has, is available, that will not be utilized on this particular sign. And we've discussed with the planning department putting prohibitions of that type of use so that this will be a changeable sign versus an animated sign that's not permitted by the ordinance. So if I could just ask, Tim Fishman, maybe to just kind of walk through the sign details a little bit. We've talked about sizing. We had an opportunity to talk to the planning department about the sizing of the letters. And I think we've come to an understanding and agreement on the sizing. We anticipate that the lettering along the messaging board will allow for lettering and a logo of no greater than 24 inches in total height in that particular column, which is a total of 30 inches at the bottom of the sign. So, Tim, you want to just turn the comment?
Good evening. I believe the counselor has addressed all of...
Just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Tim Fisher with ID Sign Group. And the counselor's done a great job basically giving you an overview of the sign, the technology, the size of the sign. Do you have any specific questions you would like answered?
The chairman?
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just curious if we could get a better visual of what the sign will look like. I can't even see that from here. So, and if you could discuss the illumination and how bright it would be and who is going to be able to see that other than people driving on the expressway?
So the orientation of the sign really does cater to the expressway. The contract is going in and out of Boston regularly every day so they can get off the offering there. And it's pretty much strategically placed for that reasoning. As far as the illumination of the sign, it will be LED illuminated. The electronic message center portion of the sign will be no brighter than the top portion of the sign, which is the same lumens as what Curry's Curry Hardware has always been. It will not exceed what was there, which is 0.3 lux candles of illumination.
So has this gone before the outdoor advertising permission from the state board? Is that...
No, it's a non-premise decision.
It doesn't have to? Okay.
Yeah, only because if it's a non-premise sign, it's not categorized as a non-premise.
Oh, okay.
Then put it as a billboard.
Okay, and so would you control the sign or would you be leasing it to a clear channel or something?
We're controlling the sign.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be a private sign, unlike the Beyond East sign, which is part of that, which is through a clear channel or leased out to a separate operator. This is actually for Curry's use alone.
Okay.
And there would be no additional advertising placed on the sign. That's a matter that we discussed with the planning department. The goal is really just to advertise products that they have available within the Curry Hardware store. It won't be used for advertising or providing advertising opportunities to other parties.
Thank you.
I'm just glad it can't be. It has to be prohibited, has to be strictly on premise advertising. And it's an open, then it is indeed a billboard if it's on premise.
Got it, thanks.
So that's quite all right. So as far as the illumination goes, the lower electronic message center portion of the sign, that has a photo eye adjustment. So as the day when it starts, when it illuminates, say at 4:30 in the evening, such as now, it will be at its brightest intensity. As the daylight starts to dwindle and nightness comes about, then your illumination will actually decrease. It's got a photo sensor within. So those lumens of light that will be emitted actually decrease because it realizes it's getting. And that's one of the nice features of this particular electronic message center. It's made here in America and it's top of the line. It's got all the bells and whistles to be able to do that, to self-adjust. The messages, as the counselor has stated, it's amazing what it can do. It's going to be a static message, no flashing, no streaming. Just gives the client the ability to advertise one static message and change that message routinely.
Number three. So a couple of questions. For the static message at the bottom of the sign, am I visualizing it correctly that it will always be a graphic, you know, for example, a, what the Benjamin Moore used to look like? It'll be a digital, you know, whatever product you happen to decide, but it won't be what we're actually seeing?
Correct.
You know, that it won't be black with letters with, you know, some words, you know, advertised on a sale? It'll be graphic?
Logo, Benjamin Moore logo, Toronto, one, always typically like that.
Okay, good. So it'll be really clean and crisp. And then the other question I have is, I remember the old sign, but, you know, it just sort of blended into the background. I never really thought much about it. What will the prominence of this sign be when you're coming up Willard to the store?
And as Tim was saying, the orientation of the sign will be really for the highway. As you can really see, you know, as the highway running north and south, Willard Street runs in the opposite direction from this location. So when we presented it to the neighbors, they realized that what they would see is they would see the side of the sign. They would not see the prominent face of the sign.
Can you see the sign when you're coming like by Home Depot toward, you know, going down?
If I may, you can catch part of it. Typically, if you come out Hall Place, the orientation of the sign, you won't see any of the faces of the sign. You'll just see the edge on Hall Place. So if you come up Willard Street, yeah, you will catch it a little bit of an angle.
But not full on?
Not full on, no. It's directed, you know, perpendicular to the highway, so.
Okay. And that's a great point because that's a point that we discussed with the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. And I failed to mention that the counselor had a neighborhood meeting, well-attempted. About 15 people came to the Cover Market Restaurant. And that was their primary concern is what kind of vision would they have from the neighborhood? And we showed them that vision and it was clear to them that they were really going to see the side of the sign and not the face.
That very helps me out. Another question.
Any other questions? Okay, this is public hearing. Can I ask anybody that wishes to speak to come forward, identify himself? Anyone wishing to speak?
John Raffel, I just want to get on record that I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Third last time, anyone wishing to speak? Okay, and entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Over.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a comment?
Yes, we do. So this is just a sign project. We wait for review for this case. The only department we're really engaged with is Inspection Services Department. One of the things that this board does not typically see, but the department is aware of, is a move to these electronic message boards. We're seeing them a lot in the drive-throughs. We're asking, we've been asked by inspection services for our comments for, whether it's McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts. So one of the struggles with this case that we had to work through is the electronic board is, the technology has outpaced the zoning code. So what they are proposing to install does have the ability to turn into an animation sign. And that was a lot of their concerns expressed from inspection services on this one because they've held the line on not allowing these, you know, in the city. There's some message boards that can, you know, print letters, you know, for a message, but, you know, nothing animated. That has been prohibited in the city for some time. So we do have a recommendation for this with some specific conditions that are geared towards this electronic sign. And one of the issues I went back with attorney Fleming is, and because Coleman Barry brought it up, remember Barry is the color. So we are, I believe, comfortable with allowing colors to be shown on the electronic sign, but that color cannot change as part of, cannot be animated to change colors. So I just want, you know, you'll hear that in one of my recommendations for the conditions. And we just, you know, obviously Curry's running a business here, you know. I think being able to mimic some of the logos for some of the products they're selling, I mean, makes for a better looking sign. I think what they're showing, you know, looks a little bit more like a highway construction sign. With just lighted up dots for letters, you know, I think, you know, this board is agreeable to allowing this. You know, having a better looking sign is what we're looking for. So with that, the, based on the interdepartmental review, the department recommends that the board approve the special permit under Quincy Center Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 5.3.6, changeable sign with rotating messages on a scheduled basis, and 5.3.13 freestanding sign of greater height with the following conditions. Number one, for the electronic sign, all product logos, letters and numbers shall not exceed a maximum height of 24 inches. Number two, the electronic, for the electronic sign, the message shall not change more than once per day. Number three, for the electronic sign, the message board and software shall not be capable of video streaming, live action, changing of colors or animation of any kind. And number four, for the electronic sign, advertisement of services or products not sold at Curry Hardware located at 370 Copeland Street Quincy, Mass. is prohibited. That's the department's recommendation.
Any questions to the recommendation? Or motion?
So.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing. 137-139 Sagamore Street. Planning Board case 2018-22. According to the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing in Winston, November 14, 2018. On Route 812 on the lower level conference room, Old Town Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on the application of Hung Kai Hung, 69 Appleton Street, Unit 1, Quincy, Mass. 2171. For a site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review. The applicant proposes the construction of 18-unit residential buildings by renovating and reconstructing the existing commercial structure with ground-level parking for 27 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping and drainage and other sidewalk decay. Property contains 9,600 more or less square feet of land incorporated at 137-139 Sagamore Street. Subject property is located within a business B zoning district and shown in the site plan 6046 Block 16. Counselor Failing?
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. William Failing, the applicant, Kai Hung and his son Ethan Hung. I'm here with Philip Fresco, Fresco Architects, as well as Michael Joyce, who's an engineer with the Joyce Consulting Group. Now, this is a project where the applicant seeks to, a site plan review in order to construct an 18-residential unit structure, renovating an old, somewhat rundown, commercial building on Sagamore Street. The building encompasses about three-quarters of the site. The right front quadrant is currently parking and it dips down into, almost like a parking in the rear. What the applicant's proposing to do is to square off that building essentially with two levels of parking, one at the street level and one at the lower level, and then construct a five-story building with 18 units, consisting of 27 parking spaces. We first presented the plan to the planning staff. They made some comments and suggestions. We went back to the drawing board, board, reconfigured with the help of the architect, Philip Fresco, the entrance and exit way, and actually eliminated the residential units on the first floor of the building so that we could incorporate trash, a trash room on the first floor of the building as well as good sightlines when vehicles are entering and exiting the building. From there, we went to the planning board, I mean, excuse me, the zoning board, and sought relief from various zoning restrictions, which were granted conditionally upon this board, granting a site plan review and other conditions which we've agreed to as well. So with that, I could turn it over to Philip Fresco, the architect, who could describe the site and the project as well.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project. Philip Fresco, architect, landscape architect. With me is Chris Triana. And we're working together to try and create a new building, which is basically this part of the building that is here is this part of this little commercial storefront. So we're leaving that. There happens to be an excellent basement under this, which turns out to be lucky for the owner, a place where we can put cars. The slope also is very helpful. In fact, it's a natural ramp down into that space. This is a building that's to the rear of this building. And it also has a garage space. And it was quite well, it was used for industrial uses. And I would say that it's decent for parking, quite decent. So that would be our lowest level of parking, which, what we have, I totally believe that garage door, that'd be great. We have one garage door here, another garage door here at this point. We have an entrance into our building, which goes into what would be considered a residential lobby and elevator lobby. And to the left of this is a, like a community room for the residents of the building. This would be the entrance of the building. And so this is our upper level of parking. There's two levels of parking here, a total of 27 parking spaces. So one goes up into that, and then the other level is going down, ramp at this point, into a parking garage here, van parking here, an elevator centered to that. So we'll go back to the first door, that would be the building. There's a trash room and other equipment that can come out onto the street at this point. On the second floor, which is the roof of the first floor, in here, we've created a little bit of a courtyard, which will have planting on it. I have a landscape plan that shows how we might do that. I've done this before and it makes for a nice setting for markets to look out and wrap around that in private areas. We also have private spaces with balconies for the units around the building here. Again, this is the elevator, and it is three floors, six units of, I think there's three three bedrooms, six... six one-bedrooms, and nine two-bedrooms, so a total of 18 apartments. The range in size is from 600, and it's changed for one bedroom, 900 to 1,000 for two, and 1,100, 1,200 for three bedrooms. So, they're reasonable-sized apartments, and there is a roof here, which we had used for equipment, and equipment only, but the idea was to catch some of the rainwater and the like and use it for planting, to try to make a quasi-green roof around the edge of that form. So, it's late in the evening, I don't want to take too much of your time, wrap up, but so I'll just take questions.
Any questions from the Board?
I have one, and again, repeat the bedroom break down. It is six one-bedrooms, nine two-bedrooms, and three bedrooms.
And now, they, they condos?
No, I believe they don't to be apartments.
Okay.
Yeah.
All of your ranches.
Okay.
Thank you. The owner is here. This is Kevin Wong with his son, David.
They are here.
And I think I said five stories, mistaken.
Me too.
Hey, out of the story.
Not good.
Not good.
We cut it off.
But I called you counsel.
Member Barry, question?
Just a couple. I see the side profile, I guess it would be the western facade. It'd be helpful to get the visual of, you know, if you're in the outfield, of welcoming up park, looking at the site. I'd really like to get a feel for if I'm at the T, if I'm on Newport, or no, actually, on, you know, Hancock, what this is going to do to that neighborhood and how it'd look. That'd be helpful for me. I imagine it's going to be visible. If I'm thinking about it right.
Certainly, we'll have to provide that. We also, one of the conditions of the zoning board was that it be brick on all four sides, so it's not going to be any, the facade is going to be the same all around, to the extent that helps. I don't know that we have a view of the proposed building from that, from that side at this point, however.
Speaking of the color brick that we're using, close to where you're at.
And that's okay if you don't have an analog? I'm saying that it might be something like that.
This is, this is a plot on view. I had circulated to a, we give a model, we build a model in the computer, and I sent four fixed views, but I have a model available, and we can construct that and make it from eye level, eye view, and from distance away and embed a view into exactly what you're asking for. But the side view is here, it's a fairly plain brick building. We have a balcony on two locations here, and we were considering another material for that indication to give it a little bit of interest for the personal balconies there. Something, a cement board, it would be a smooth face, hardy plant, kind of, or something like this. But all these kind of things, we expect that we could meet with planning and go over the specifics, mortar color, brick type, and match these things so that we'd have a sophisticated building here for presentation on the street then. So, we can easily do that, rendering the topic.
Then, the only other question I had is, I was very happy to hear about the effort to have, in your words, a semi-green roof. Are those plantings along the perimeter?
Yes.
And will they be visible? Because I don't see them in the rendering on the left. Will they be plantings that are somewhat above the ledge so that you would sort of see a crown of landscaping when you're looking at the building?
We can do that. It depend on the selection of the plant material and the height of power pit and the like. I don't want it blowing off, but I want to collect water. I'm here with Michael Joyce, and we were asked that when rainwater gets mitigated or slowed down, so that if we can develop some green areas on the property, that would be that. So, we have to do that, know whether this is the specific number of plants and the plant type. I'm a landscaper, I love planting things, and I have roof gardens that are on top of buildings, and I can do this. And I can do that where if one wants to see that, you know, we can make things that would broken.
I mean, I definitely love the idea, when you have a plot like this, where you're relatively limited in the landscaping that you can do, adding that splash of green in a way that is economical, but also efficient. And it just, it struck me as an opportunity here, especially the visibility that I believe this project will have from a number of different angles, number of different highly-traveled angles. It could be hopefully a touch that you could add and present to us that wouldn't be too over.
It helps with rainwater mitigation, so that ain't cooling. So, rather than look at air-conditioning boxes or condensers, you know, we might have something more pleasant. So, that's the, thank you.
All right. Well, go to my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board?
I wasn't going to, if you have any questions with Michael. I know he wasn't sure whether he should show up tonight, I, that he did, so might as well say a few words.
Close enough.
So, as we've gone over the existing buildings, kind of an L shape here, we're closing off the building, squaring it up. From a civil standpoint, we have all new utilities. The sidewalk here now is kind of a, almost like a cast-in-place concrete sidewalk, but there's no real curb. So, we're going to be extending the granite curb from the development of the corner all the way down across the lot and putting in new concrete sidewalks. Two access points to the two garages on the street. From a stormwater perspective, we're kind of limited with the area of what we can do. What we're proposing is in the ramp that goes down to the lower level first, 10 feet or so is level before you drop down, so we're putting two, I believe there's six-foot diaphragm drywalls in that area. Correcting the roof drains there, and then during the larger storms, it'll be surface runoff. Currently, there is no, the site's all impervious. Appleton's a site that's more or less going to be all impervious, with the exception of the roof plantings, which will slow down and reduce some of the runoff. Overall, all the storm events, will be no increase in runoff from the proposed development. And that's really, to about the extent, will be new water, fire, gas, sewer connections. That's very extensive.
Any questions, Mr. Joyce? Number Barry.
I'm not sure if it's Mr. Joyce. Does anybody else have any question? The one thing that I just thought of is the trash room that you pointed out. I imagine it'll be a onsite pickup of the trash.
It will be, it'll be privately picked up at least once a week. Residents will be able to access it from the garage and the, through the elevator, and then they will go right up onto the street, they will, and lodge, contain this up to the street. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. So, I'd ask anybody that wishes to speak to come forward, identify itself, and sitting down the impatiently.
Patient, yes. My name is Mary Ann Smith. I own a property at 871091 New Riyadh. And this, it's directly in back of their property. So, my property would be here. And they're building right to my lot line. So, I would like to someday build apartments on my property, but that would mean my walls would be facing their windows, and it would make it so that I couldn't do... I think that they should be set back a little so that I can have the ability to build on my property.
I don't, I don't know, Counselor, the zoning board of appeals trying to relieve was one of them.
Yes, but that was a pre-existing, non-conforming, non-conformity, actually, as to that rare setback. That's where the building is currently, and it's not being altered at all in terms of the setback.
Right. And the building, you know, for years has been, you know, dropping water into my yacht from their roof.
To, yeah, to the extent that that is the case, the, I think the engineering in this project is actually to improve it, not, you know, make it worse because of the area to the left side, first of all, and then the other plantings along the side of the roof. So, although it's still not going to be, you know, brought away from the property line anymore, it's certainly not going to increase the runoff from the existing condition of the building.
Well, it's one thing to have an eight- or 10-foot building right next to mine, but to add, you know, three or four more stories to it, and it would preclude me from building, unless you would say I could put a building up where I would block your windows.
Well, to the extent, that would be up to you to seek that, I don't, I don't agree with that.
If that was your decision, and your design is what you present, whether it be this board or what's of the city permitting authority, okay.
So, they would be allowed to just build right up to my lot line?
What they're doing is working within the property, let's start at the building, that's there as a pre-existing, non-conforming. It was there prior to the adoption of zone.
Right.
Okay. What they're doing is taking that building line, if you will, okay, retaining it. Yes, they're going up, but they're keeping that, that building, correct? Counsel, very much.
Okay, my building line goes exactly to that line too. My building ends there.
Correct.
So, if I wanted to bring it up and over, it would, you know, it would be able to block up the windows.
But I mean, if you, if you brought in that and it got approved, okay, that's your plan, okay, then that's what, on the assumption that this building gets approved, then the owner or owners would have to live with that, just like, you know, your situation. But again, it would be subject, if you made a presentation, the specifics of your presentation would be what you wanted, okay? And on the assumption, as I said, that this building gets built, and the property owners, the property owner or owners are going to have to live with whatever, if you get it approved. Because it's the same thing, it's a pre-existing.
Well, it isn't, it isn't, because if I was, if I asked first, they would approve mine, because it wouldn't interfere with their building.
Possibly, okay.
Yeah.
But that's not the situation.
If theirs is already built, and then I asked, they could say you're interfering with my...
No. Well, if, if, if the permits that they were, you are requesting, okay, granted, then you have a permit to build what you want to build, okay? If it meets the criteria of the city, okay? I understand that the abutter or abutters have a comment, a comments, okay? But again, if your, if your proposal meets the criteria that the city has, and yes, the input from an abutter or abutters has something to do, but doesn't prohibit you from doing something, on the condition that it gets approved by the permanent grant authority, whether it be the building department, or whether it be us, or whether it be the zoning board of appeals. Just like they've been to the board of appeals, okay? They've got the necessary permits from a zoning entity, okay? You may have to do the same thing if that was, if you had a proposal. But again, they're going through the process, and you're having an opportunity to speak, okay? But understanding that, and you alluded to it, you, if you had been first, okay, they may be, they may be in your seat, okay, saying that they have a problem, okay, or an issue, because they may want to build. They want to build, you would still have the opportunity to build what you wanted to build, subject to the approval, which is the process they're going through right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? John? Need an add to this?
John Rutherford, 63 Grandwall Road. I'm just going to read our zoning code. Multifamily residents and mixed use of a building are permitted within a Business A and Business B district with the issuance of a special permit in accordance with the standard and procedures of Section 9.4 by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Residential buildings and uses within Business A districts, obtaining a special permit as provided herein shall conform to all requirements of Residential B districts. So, that's what it reads. So, again, this is, this is Business A, so Business A refers to Res B, and this is 9,600 square feet divided by 18, 533 square feet per dwelling unit. This is almost a Business C dwelling space per unit that I am strongly against, but it's, I almost call this almost a Mr. Murphy rule, because this happened at the Quincy Shore Drive. That was not Business C, and that was maybe 28 units that we approved on 10,000 square feet or 12,000 square feet. So, the setbacks, it's, am I correct by looking at this that it takes up pretty much? Like, what is the left setback and what is the right setback? It's not that much, is it? I don't know, it's taking up like...
I don't know, but, you know...
It's not the same footprint, because they're making it a square. Right now, it's one building, and then it's a driveway, and then it's an attachment to that building. But they're going to take that thing and make a whole square. So, they're not, you know, this, this just, like I said, I don't understand. People are piggybacking from one project to another project, and if this is the future, you know, this is just, this is just not good. So, like I said, I'm very confused with how zoning is supposed to be interpreted, if we're supposed to interpret zoning literally, or if we're just supposed to use it as guidelines, okay? I am a big advocate of literal. You know, if we have a law, follow the laws, follow the rules. If we want to allow people to do this, let's change the zoning and allow everybody to do this, not just grant special permits to this person or to that person, but let's, you know, change the zoning so anyone can do whatever they want. One of the things that you need to do is be less restrictive on people in Res A, I would guess, because Res A orders a lot of these districts. If you look how our city is districted up, there's hundreds of different zones, all older places. It's not like we have one section here, one section here, one section here. I don't even understand, I grew up down Muckaway Park in that area, and to me, where are the kids going to play who live in this building, okay? There's probably going to be kids in there. Three-bedroom units, typically, there's at least two kids. Two-bedroom units, typically, there's at least one kid. So, I heard that there's three-three-bedroom units and six-two-bedroom units. So, my math, at least 12 kids are going to be living in this place. Where are they going to play? You know, they're going to play on the street? I mean, it's, it's a matter of like, you know, just figuring it out. Like I said, this is, this is, like I said, this is the wrong zone. I don't know if this is a mistake, or if this is an oversight by the zoning board. I was at the meeting. I don't think I even stood up against this one, because I don't remember. I must not have been paying attention. I must have been running between one meeting and another meeting and not having my full attention. Like I have tonight, because of the school committee meeting going on right now, and I got to run over there and get my camera. And I'm very concerned, because I want to get on record for the next item. And am I correct, is this the last item right now? Okay, so, I'm basically wasting my own time right now by talking, so I will shut up. Thank you very much.
I won't prolong the discussion, but I will tell you that Chapter 48 is all enabling legislation for the Commonwealth. is all enabling legislation for the Commonwealth, provides for an applicant to seek a variance, okay, if they're not in compliance with the local zoning. And the local zoning is mandatory, but the applicant can seek variances from the zoning board of appeals if they don't meet the criteria. And that's in, that's in the general laws of the Commonwealth. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody wishing to be recorded who has not spoken? Sheeps on the side. Okay, ask the board to continue this for our next meeting, December 12th. Second question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This is, oh yeah, we guys only change. Okay, the next item is a public hearing, council order 2018-146, zoning ordinance amendment, site plan review, applicability. Notice is hereby given in accordance with provisions of national laws, chapter 48, section 5, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 14th, on a hour after 9:00, H39, in the lower level conference room of the city hall to be held by Hankart Street. The purpose of the hearing, the interest of parties, the opportunity to comment on council order 2018-146, proposing changes to the Quincy zoning ordinance type 17. The council order proposes to amend the city zoning ordinance to include the following: delete section 9.5 site plan review, 9.5.1 applicability, section 1 in its entirety, and add the following: all multi-family or apartment development in any zoning district, which results in a dwelling with 10 or more dwelling units. So instead of the present requirement, it's 3. I will tell you that when the ordinance was first proposed, seven years ago, Mr. Bobowski's proposal said that it should be 10 units, and the council amended it to 3 units at the time. So they're now requesting a, to go to 10, which was the original language of the proposal that Mr. Bobowski brought in. Okay, it is a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak? Second, anyone wishing to speak? Third, last time?
Thank you very much for having me. John Ruffel, 62 Grandwall Road. I just wish when this was advertised, that they advertised the sentence that was going to be taken out along with the sentence that was going to be taken in. Because when I read the public ad, I didn't really know what it meant. And then once I went to the zoning and I referenced that this was 9.5.1, and I have a bad memory, why I can't remember these stupid zoning facts and stuff, is because I just paid too much attention to it.
I paid too much.
Okay? But when I saw that it was the three dwelling units, I was like, oh my! Because the way that a citizen can find out if something's going on in the city. When I first started doing this, I didn't know how anything worked. And one of the things I learned was that if you want to come into the city of Quincy and you want to build three units or more, you can't sneak it by because they're going to have to advertise in planning. Now, the planning department does a good job when they do advertising because they advertise in the Patriot Ledger. So I'll go to ma-publicnotices online and I'll see, boom! There's a public hearing that's coming up, so that was advertised, so I know I can come up here if anything over 3 is going to be developed. So let's say if you say no to this, well, now we're going to put the onus on to just the zoning board. So right now, the zoning board, when they advertise, they choose to advertise in Quincy Sun. And the Quincy Sun is not on ma-publicnotices, so therefore, when something is advertised in zoning in the paper, if you're looking on the internet, you're not going to see that. So, I mean, I, I like the Quincy Sun, but I don't get the Quincy Sun. And so therefore, you know, I'm not sure why they're not coordinated with ma-publicnotices, so those notices are there. The license board also does the same thing. So if something goes to the license board, you're not going to see that unless you read the Quincy Sun too. So I guess it is important to read the Quincy Sun for public notices, but public notices are really supposed to be made to the public, you know? They're supposed to be put on the boards, you're supposed to like, I think you're supposed to do more than the law requires, but do extra. So to me, this is taking away from someone like me to find out about meetings. I sat up here and I watched this board give a waiver to special permit. I can remember Atlantic Street up in North Quincy, someone wanted to build two duplexes, they wanted four units, you gave them a site plan waiver. I've seen that a couple times. So, I mean, about the only thing I could maybe support on this is maybe taking it, going from three and maybe going to four, but to go from three up until 10? You see all the cases that come before you. How many different cases do we see that you have to review? So are we really wasting your time? You know, are there that many four, five, six, seven family develops coming through the city? There really aren't. And then if you look at how many developers are developing four, five, six, seven, eight, it's only a handful. So you really only have to contact, I mean, if you, you know, keep contact with Attorney Hines, Attorney Fleming, Attorney Vanlandow, and the other attorney Fleming, you will know what's going on and they're very, you know, they will all talk to you and they'll all give you information about what is going on. So this is all about public information. It's about, you know, giving the people an opportunity to speak. And what I've noticed, not that many people use that opportunity to speak. So if you do take this away, it's going to be because the people aren't up here to speak for their opportunity to speak. But I always feel that it only takes one person to speak for everybody when they're speaking the right thing and they're speaking the truth. And the truth is that the people are being overwhelmed with development in the city and we need a moratorium on any new development. So to make it easier for people to develop, I'm just strongly against. So I just want to, you know, somehow get this on the record. I mean, I'm kind of confused that there might not even be an opportunity for the public to speak at City Hall. I mean, do you know, Chad and me, like, is this pretty much the only opportunity for anyone to speak on this?
The council will have a public hearing on this.
Okay.
On this item, yeah, the council's required to have a public hearing and the planning board is required to have a public hearing.
But I would like at least it to be re-advertised because I think if you're going to delete something, you should advertise what you're going to delete and then what you're going to replace it with. And that's just, you know, let's be transparent, even if you are going to allow 533 per square feet per dwelling unit. I mean, it's just, you know, we really, if it is just a show, basically what you're doing is you're not going to have to show anymore for anything less than 10. I mean, it's, it's, I'm trying to think here, I'm thinking like Mill Street was just 7, there was like 9, Sumner Street was, was, was less than 10. So they're all like less than 10. So I'm, I'm not sure where we're going with this, okay? I mean, maybe if they just get denied. Because I can guarantee you this, Ed, if we started denying this, the lawyers will start coming up here. The lawyers are just going to keep coming up here because we're, we're accepting everything. I mean, I'm, I'm personally myself, if you can't beat them, join them. I mean, I'm selling all my property down in Tonin and, you know, I see a windfall of money that you can make by buying a house that's on a large lot that is not developed. But is that what life's all about, squeezing as much money and making as much profit in, in the city as possible? We're supposed to have new growth and all this new growth is supposed to come back to the taxpayers, but all the new growth is not coming back to the taxpayers. It's like saying the DIF is going to be paid by the downtown. It's not going to be paid by the downtown. That DIF money is being bonded as general obligation debt. General obligation debt is being paid by all the people in the city. The retirement pension fund is in serious trouble and that needs the tax money. Well, the subject is.
Subject is the zoning change.
The, well, the zoning change has to do with the new growth and unless we can prove the new growth is being positive, we all know that the new growth is.
The subject is what was advertised for a zoning change. It's nothing to do, has nothing to do with DIFs or anything else, okay?
Well, I think it does all tie together.
You and I are going to disagree, but I'm telling you that the subject matter is the zoning change, okay? And that's what you want to speak to.
Well, the zoning change, okay, is, is like I said, it should be at least re-advertised because I feel that if you are going to do it, just, just re-advertize it again and, and let people know. Or go back to the other councillors because this, I think, was just put out by, this was, I've never heard this discussed at a council meeting. It hasn't been put in committee. Somehow it's been referred to here. And I've seen how things work in the city and I just don't want something to slip through and all of a sudden, all of a sudden, it's 10 now and, and we can't come up here. And, you know, it's basically saying your job isn't as important as the zoning board. And I actually think, hands down, the, this board is, is better than the zoning board. I respect this board most out of any board we have in the city. And, you know, for them to take away the power from the board that has the most power, to me, is really scary. So I would say keep your power, keep your review, and, you know, if you do give a recommendation, give a negative one, please, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Third and last time, anybody wishing to speak? Motion to close the public hearing?
I got a lot of questions.
Okay.
And so I don't know whether we want to close the public hearing and I ask. So this is a good example of something that comes to us from the city council, but we don't have anybody coming and arguing why.
No, it's my understanding that Council Palmucci introduced, that's all.
So, you know, we, we are not given the benefit of argument for, again. The first thing that came to my mind when I saw this is that we wouldn't have talked about Mill Street if this had been approved. Completely unacceptable. I, I want nothing to do with this amendment. Mill Street was a home run for the city of Quincy, what we did, number of other projects that we engaged with that are under 10 that we add value by having them come before us. So I, it, I don't, unless I'm missing something, and again, I don't have somebody here to tell me if I'm, and I will turn to you, so Ashley, please, please, my director, edify me about why my concerns are misplaced and I will rethink my visceral adverse reaction to given a positive recommendation.
The amendment before, excuse me, the resolution for, it's just that, it's a resolution, it's, it's, and I'm going to tell you, I've spoken to Council Palmucci about this. And it was really, his intention is to run this thought process along was prior to the President Crowell's recodification, which came out at this past city council meeting. Basically, they have decided, the board and the administration have both spoken and decided that it's time after having added some 4,500 units of the city's housing count since 2011, the last time we were codified, the last time we had a gentleman by the name of Robowski coming for us. Their intent is to have him come back to the city, or someone like him, but I'm pretty sure that's the one that they've chosen, and to do a check. This particular piece came into, the Palmucci idea was to stimulate exactly what it's going to do. It's going to stimulate conversation. I've had a conversation as recently as last night with Council Palmucci and he said, well, modify it, come back and tell me. And I said, it's your, that's for the city council, that's for duty. I said, so I'll share some thoughts. And I shared thoughts which are very, very clear. I agree with you. I don't think that there is a, a number that, you know, is close to 10 that I would want to take a look at. Starting at 10, you have the responsibility of being part of the inclusion of the zoning ordinance. So if you're at 10 units, we're already talking about one unit has to be either, you know, put into the affordable housing role or cash loof or another unit in lieu of. So that's where you start. So him putting a number out there at 10 was his effort at getting the conversation started. I shared with him some of my thoughts, we will continue to do so. And as Council Crowell and the other council is now being thoughtful or thinking about this process of looking into zoning in a general, just not, you know, this is just a small piece of what they, they plan to look at, okay? So I have said, as the planning director, I think that the number of 10 is absolutely too large a number. And I said, as we get professional advice, that should be taken into consideration, what other communities are doing. And also, I could get myself, you know, into a place where we can agree on a lot of things if the actual dimensional requirements, as far as setbacks go, are enforced. So if, if basically we decide that it's X amount of units, but it's on postage stamping, that doesn't work. If it's X amount of units on a larger project, it, it may work. I think normally, and I speak again as the planning director, when I look at three units, very rarely do I think three units is something that, you know, is, real decisions are being made by this board. I think the real decisions are being made by the zoning board of appeals because they're going to decide what's going to fit, where those three units are going to fit. And I also counsel, counsel Palmucci that this needs more conversation amongst his own members for the very simple fact that you have three councillors who are at large. You have six who are board councillors. Depending on where your ward is, it is going to depend on how many times you're going to be impacting the different zoning districts in the city. Now, if you were, and then maybe, I'm sure there is, and maybe Rob could tell us, what particular neighborhood, what particular precinct, you know, has X amount of res A? Yeah, we can go there. But when you put the entirety of any ward in, you've got res A, res B, you've got the whole mix. But some are a little bit more dense in multi and some are more res A. So these conversations, to your point, have to be discussed. This particular item before you tonight is really more of a public hearing. It's part of, he gets to ask us to do so. And I spoke to him and I said, well, I think that you're, if you're asking us to give you a number, we're not going to do it because we don't have that information. There should be a discussion, there should be a lively discussion had. But again, this is an action that started at the city council. It's come before you for a public hearing. Basically, I would not expect, and I'm not counseling you one way or the other, but I don't think that a positive nor recommend, or a negative recommendation is what I would expect out of a board and I'm just giving you that as my testimony. I don't think it's, I don't think they've gotten there yet with this particular piece of, of legislation because that's what it is. And they want to come forth with a number, give us a number as a board and we can, we can weigh in at a later day if that is going to happen. I'm not sure that this won't be kind of pulled into the overall zoning questions that are going to be presented to Professor Bobowski or anybody else of his stature to make these decisions. So again, what's before you tonight is basically, they came to us with a public hearing. I said, I don't think that this is something that my advice to this board would be is to act on a number at this stage of the game. And I told that to. And I told that to Council Pomucci last night personally, and I told him that I think at this stage of the game, there's more work to be done and more to decide. This follows the public meeting request in time to match his resolution, so it needed to be heard by this board, but I echo your sentiment, there is, it'd be very difficult for you to come back and say yes to 10, you know? And I said, I think that we can have a meeting, this can speak to it, it's been advertised, but I don't think at this point, you know, I'm comfortable giving you and this board a recommendation to give it a yea or a nay, a positive or a negative. So that's, that's what's transpired. And he heard that and he heard the wisdom that I was trying to impart, which is, if this is a fixed number, there needs to be, you know, you could take every number for units. Well, how do you feel about four? Well, you get up to five, you feel a little bit more serious about five, you get up to six, now I think we're, we're really looking at something. So I've asked the councillor to take a look at any number that he would like us to look at, and we'll provide him all the five-unit, four-unit decisions and he can, he can make a determination. We want to help him get to a number that may work for him. And I'm going to keep my opinion out of it until they do that work. So that, that's, that's my explanation of how we got here, what's going on here, and, you know, if there is, if you want to know my recommendation, I think that we are not in a position at this time to pick a number.
I think that whatever that number is, is something that Council Pomucci and others want to submit, has been in discussions with, indeed, Mike Bobowski is the select consultant, okay?
Yes.
And that's the time to bring forward to Mark, okay? Inside of his recoder.
Which is what I think occurred after, after the council heard for the first time that they, well, the council unanimously proposed to have this study done and the administration was absolutely a partner in that, supportive, because again, to the point you're making, how do you pick a number? It's not out of the hat, you know? You can look at what this community has had, because we have a great deal of development, but at the same time, you know, I believe the doctor will come back and say, well, these are the communities that are like-sized, this is what goes before their planning board, some of those types of situations. So I'm with, there are some, and by the way, not all seven unit, you know, proposals, are we fullness? No, five units, you know, that's, that's where we're at, we're in that place. We don't have to worry about site plan below three, okay? But there's, there's that argument that accelerates as you go up to 10. And I, just as my other job as chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust, I know that once you're into, you're making that kind of decision, I absolutely believe the planning board has to take a look at this. Where you ratchet down to them, I prefer to leave that to somebody that does that for a living and give the council an opportunity to have a discussion on that on their side. This, just because it was filed and it requires a public hearing, I explained to him that we will have that public hearing, but I think it would be difficult to expect this board to give a positive recommendation or, for that matter, a negative recommendation with the amount of information that you have on this.
I would think it would be in his best interest just to let it die and wait for the results of Mr. Bobowski's review.
I, I tend to think that that may be exactly what happens, it may meld in with that, because again, this preceded the...
Yeah, you said it.
...that was prepared and then given to the board.
It would be helpful also to, you know, find out what the rationale is behind this, I mean, it's a hearing and there's been no testimonies, but it, correct?
That's correct. Again, it's, it's...
Is it because development isn't happening fast enough or what is it?
No, no, no. I, I think this started as a, as a, as a, his effort at getting focus on, you know, what we're doing here. I think he's also focused on what is going on at the, at the zoning board of appeals. Because it, nothing that we do doesn't conclude that as far as especially dimensional belief. So that's where we're at. And I think it's not just about site plan, I think it's about the larger conversation that both the board, excuse me, both the City Council last night unanimously recommended that we bring in a third party to give us that, that information and to do a checkup on where we've been. Because a great point was made, and I know that the mayor and Brad, the council president, Brad Crowell, put a lot of time into this and they talked about it, and they said, you know, this is the way to do it, this isn't something that is just a City Council action, it has to be a City Council, one of the administration members. So that's, that's where they're headed. And I do believe that in fact what you suggested may occur, this gets blended into the other effort.
Okay.
How do I do?
I feel great.
Okay. So I asked to...
Do you still want to keep it open?
Okay.
Do you still want to keep it open?
Very typical.
Do we need to, or can we close the public?
I think you can close the public hearing on this. As it currently stands, there is no recommendation, positive nor negative from this board because...
And if the council wishes to move forward without our recommendation, they can do so.
Yes, they can. They could have in the first place. But again, this is more of a procedural situation, I believe, but it was the intention of the council to have this here.
Can I clarify, would you be in motion to close without our recommendation?
Just make a beginning, to close the public hearing. It's our second to the motion. Close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd just add to our honorary member over there, John, your testimony will be forwarded, you know, with it.
Well, my testimony is the only testimony, because you didn't give any testimony, so I would, I would go with the only expert that spoke tonight would be correct.
Your testimony will get forwarded back.
Thank you.
Like, it doesn't get lost? I think that's important for you.
It's good, Council Pomucci is actually difficult to talk to, he's hard to get a hold of. I was trying to talk to him last night, Mr. Fatsy's, I did get a chance to talk to Mr. Fatsy's. But thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Number three, just a, an item.
So you, you guys are going to hate me. For the next four months, I'm going to Europe the second week of every month between now and March, so...
Do we have a meeting so we're in Europe?
One would enjoy me. So I was, I was wondering if we could, well, either one, do, because I won't take it personally, but change the meeting date for January, February, and March.
This, this is the opportunist time to have this discussion.
That's right.
Because next month, we will be voting on 2019.
You get the vote on the discussion?
No, he's...
I will be.
But I will be here to...
Why say what you say?
This trial begins in December, so December, January, February, March, I'll be gone. The normally scheduled Wednesday, but I understand that other members plan their lives around this meeting, so if...
You obviously don't.
I try, I try.
Cole, give me your available dates or reach out, email, definitely, London and Sunset Square.
But I apologize to the other members, I, I do not...
Someone needs to eat.
I gotta keep the lights on on the other bar.
Well, I appreciate that, I just would like to know where, London, this is on London?
No, no, Austria, Germany, London, and Amsterdam, I think.
So a moving, so a moving tide.
Old Harlem.
Not giving you the dates where it's going to be.
Yeah, yeah, no, he is...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just wanted to know where to send the fruit baskets.
You can follow me on Instagram.
Okay, yeah.
A little motion, which is?
So moved.
Second.